Before I call for Councilmember Flit to lead us in our invocation and pledge, we've got one particular person whom we want to recognize this morning, and that would be Officer Harvey Wyatt, who has provided security for this council for a number of years, the agenda review. Come on up.
All right.
Harvey is retiring. And we appreciate him being a part of this council, a part of our city for so many years. He has been at every agenda review that I've been to and every meeting that I've had in the last number of years. So Harvey, we appreciate you, appreciate you protecting the council especially. Mayor's usually in pretty good shape, council's questionable. But we appreciate you doing that, and we wish you well in your retirement as you turn the chapter in your life.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Officer Wyatt.
So you only have one Harvey to fool with now?
Thank goodness. We have, Major Corley, we have a substitute for Officer Wyatt coming in that's in training. I think Officer Wyatt has been doing training for this particular individual. Who do we have?
Sergeant Alberto Cologne.
Alberto Cologne, Sergeant Cologne. Welcome to City Hall. Okay, we'll call the meeting of the Jackson City Council, April 3rd, 2018, to order. And we're going to ask Councilmember Vicky Flit to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
Father God, we come to you this morning to tell you that we love you. And Father, to acknowledge that you are our almighty God. You are omnipotent. You are merciful, loving, kind, forgiving. You meet all of our needs, Lord. Father, we come to you this morning to petition on behalf of our city and our city leaders. Father, we know that without you, we can make no wise decisions, we can do nothing. And we do ask that you give us the wisdom to make good decisions that are based on wise discernment and common sense, but most of all, Lord, that are based upon the principles of your holy word. And Father, I pray for each person in this room that you might give all of us the strength and the courage to be faithful to you, Lord, in all times, regardless of our day-to-day activities, regardless of our day-to-day happenings, that we constantly be reminded, Lord, that you love us, you want what's best for us, and you are in control. Lord, teach us to be forgiven as you are forgiving. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the mistletoe with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Anita, I think you can show all council members present at this point a roll call. Council on item four is proof of the minutes of the March 6 meeting, and council members have received a copy of those minutes. And if there are no corrections or addition, we'll let those minutes stand as submitted. Item five is the invitation to public comment. If there's anyone here who'd like to be heard on a new business, if you'd be kind enough to let me know, we'll be happy to call on you and ask you to come up and address the council. It is spring, and we have a number of proclamations this morning. So I'm going to ask, the first one is in reference to the candy bar that we have here in our positions. Equal Pay Day, Mayor Joe Milbrook, Stacy Miller-Best Day. If y'all will come up, I'll get the proclamation done. Okay, this is a proclamation whereas more than 50 years ago, after passage of the Equal Pay Act entitled Seven of the Civil Rights Act, women and people of color continue to suffer the consequences of an equal pay differential. And whereas according to statistics released in 2016 by the U.S. Census Bureau, year-round full-time working women in 2015 earn only 80% of the earnings of year-round full-time working men, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas according to a January 2002 report released by the General Accounting Office, which is investigative arm of Congress, women managers in seven of 10 industries surveyed actually lost ground in closing the wage gap between 1995 and 2000. And according to analysis of data in over 300 classifications provided by the U.S. Department of Labor Statistics in 2001, women earn less in every occupational classification for which enough data is available, including occupations dominated by women. And whereas higher education is not free from wage discrimination, according to the U.S. Department of Education analysis, which reports that full-time female faculty members earn nearly 9% less than their male counterparts. And whereas over a working lifetime, this wage disparity costs the American woman and her family $700,000 to $2 million in lost wages impacting social security benefits and pensions. And whereas fair play strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas Tuesday, April 10th, 2010, symbolizes the time this year in which the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, as Equal Pay Day in Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to recognize the full value of women's skills and contributions to the labor force and further encourages businesses to ensure women are paid fairly. It's an honor for me to again present this proclamation to you all, and thank you for the awareness that you always provide during this time of need. Thank you. Come on up.
Mayor Gist, symbolic of our proclamation today, we would also like to present you a payday.
I've got two.
Thank you so much, Mayor Gist, Council. For many years, you've always been so very supportive to support the Jackson area BPW organization by celebrating Equal Pay Day as well as women everywhere in our city and in our community. As I look out amongst the women here today, not just those that stand behind me, but those that are out here in the audience and those in our community, I just want to say that we have a driving force of intelligent, knowledgeable women that are really changing what our community has been made of. I look at women that are entering the elected field. I look at women who are taking leadership roles. I look at women who are on the force of communication. And I see how our community has changed just in the city of Jackson alone by so many strong, independent, educated women that are heads of department here in the city. Mayor Gist, you have been a wonderful supporter for us and an advocate for women everywhere, and I want to thank you for that. Thank you for this proclamation. Thank you for taking the time to hear what Equal Pay Day means. The average is 20 cents on a dollar that women make according to what a male would make. In Tennessee, we do a little bit better. We make 19 cents less than what a male would make for the exact same position. We're not trying to take money away from anybody. We just want to be recognized for the work that we do, the way that we do it, as well as the other things that we do do in the workforce aside just from our positions. We're very civic-minded, we're full of a volunteer spirit, and we take care of our community. So this proclamation means more than just what the equal pay may just, excuse me, may just symbolize, that 20 cents. It actually means that we are actually being treated with respect in the workforce. And for that, I want to say thank you to each of you for listening to us and being here today to support us all. Thank you again, Mayor, Council.
You got a photo op? You got a photo op, girl?
No, 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 I got them.
You already got it? Good for you. Let me call Lieutenant Danielle Jones up for proclamation on Sexual Assault Awareness Month. If there's anyone else who brought with her, if there's anyone else who'd like to join her, come on up here. Lieutenant Danielle Jones is one of our favorite people in the whole world. Thank y'all for being here. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for community members of the city of Jackson and county of Madison. And whereas the city of Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, share a critical concern for victims of sexual violence and desire to support their needs for justice and healing. Whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our communities as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women and one in 10 men experience sexual assault in their lifetime, and that there are approximately 502 reports of rape and/or sexual assaults made to law enforcement in West Tennessee. 295 West Tennessee victims sexual assault were served by RAP in 2016-17, and Jackson-Madison County General Hospital in the same SART program performed 232 forensic exams, law enforcement interviews, or other proceedings in 2016-17. And whereas current estimates suggest no more than 20% of sexual assaults will be reported to law enforcement, and less than 3% will result in conviction and incarceration of the perpetrator. And whereas research documents that victims are far more likely to disclose their sexual assault to a friend or family member when those loved ones respond with doubt, shame, or blame, victims suffer additional negative effects on their physical and psychological well-being. And whereas the Start By Believing Public Awareness Campaign, a program to end violence against women internationally, is designed to improve the responses of friends, family members, and community professionals so they can help victims to assess supportive resources and engage the criminal justice system. Whereas the city of Jackson, county of Madison strongly support the efforts of national, state, and local partners, and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, and how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence based in an attitude of belief. Now therefore, we, Mayor Jerry Gist and Mayor Jimmy Harris, on behalf of the city of Jackson, county of Madison, Tennessee, hereby proclaim our shared support of the Start By Believing Public Awareness Campaign, and do declare the month of April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to join RAP and all other support services program in the belief that all community members must be part of the solution to end sexual violence. Lieutenant, it's an honor for me to present this to you.
Thank you, Mayor Gist, and esteemed council members. As you know, Jackson Police Department and RAP have been office mates for some time now, and with that comes more collaboration between the two entities. We are making sure that when victims are coming to the Safe Hope Center, they're being listened to and offered every possible service that may be available to them. Unfortunately, we see victims when they're at their lowest point, and how we interact with them can make a huge difference in their lives. With April being Sexual Assault Awareness Month, we decided it would be a great idea to make a public service announcement, if you will, and challenge you and others to start by believing. When we do that, the likelihood of victims becoming more empowered and willing to follow through with criminal charges becomes greater. Sexual assault has no preference. It can be your sister, your brother, your aunt, your uncle, your son, or your daughter. We ask, when someone discloses sexual assault to you, think about how you would want someone to react to your loved one. Thank you.
I'm going to speak on behalf of RAP. There's no shame when your loved one dies, when your car is stolen, when you're diagnosed with cancer. Friends and loved ones gather around you and offer support. They don't blame you for bringing it upon yourself. It should be the same with sexual violence. Rape and sexual assault are just as unpredictable and just as devastating. But all too often, victims have the courage to tell someone what happened and then are blamed for bringing it upon themselves. A terrifying attack becomes a source of shame, not support, and the pain and shame ripples throughout our community. Sexual violence hurts everyone. The Start By Believing campaign was created to change this reality. It was specifically designed to improve the reactions of all of us when someone turns to us and says, "I was raped." By changing what happens in that moment of initial disclosure, it may be possible to prevent further harm and guide sexual assault survivors on a path toward justice and healing. When you and I start by believing, we can improve the well-being of the survivors and increase their ability to participate in the investigation and the prosecution of their cases. This in turn has the potential to lead to more successful case outcomes and ultimately protect the community by holding perpetrators accountable for their crimes. Start By Believing is focused on the public response to sexual assault. The first person that a survivor confides to after an assault is usually a friend or a family member, not a police officer. Your first reaction and my first reaction is the first and possibly most important step in a survivor's long path towards justice and healing. Our positive supportive reaction will not only improve the survivor's health and well-being, but it also increases the chance that they will reach out for help to someone like RAP. The two most important things a survivor needs are things that you and I can provide, someone to talk to and someone to believe in. As we've heard, current estimates suggest that no more than 20% of sexual assaults will be reported, and less than 3% result in conviction. Additionally, because rapist attack an average of six times, one false response can equal five more victims. When we start by believing, we can stop that cycle and create a positive community response to sexual assault, both to improve outcomes for survivors and to hold offenders accountable. Your help will assist RAP in Jackson, Madison County, and throughout West Tennessee as we start by believing and work together to end violence, change lives, and give hope. So that being said, we do have our public service announcement to share with you. After that, we are going to ask our council members and our mayor to sign pledge cards that they will start by believing. We'd invite you to get a pledge card too, if you want one, and sign it, and use it on social media to help us spread the word that we will start by believing. Thank you.
Thank you all. We're so thankful for Lieutenant Jones, Sher, and Ralph, and the Safe Hope Center. Go ahead and show them.
Hello, my name is Mara White, Program Manager of Sexual Assault Services with the Women's and Men's Resource and Rape Assistance Program in West Tennessee.
And I'm Lieutenant Danielle Jones with the Jackson Police Department and Commander of the Safe Hope Center.
April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and RAP is partnering with the Jackson Police Department to launch the Start By Believing campaign.
You know the statistics. One in four women have been a victim of sexual violence in her lifetime.
Men can be victims too. One of every 10 rape victims are male. And according to the CDC, more than 42 million children in America are victims of sexual abuse.
Last year, 502 reports of sexual assault were made to law enforcement in West Tennessee. However, over 80% of sexual assaults go unreported, making sexual assault one of the most under-reported crimes.
Studies have also shown that of the reports that are made, only 2 to 6% of rape reports are actually false, which means if someone says they've been sexually assaulted, they were.
In Madison County.
And throughout West Tennessee.
We understand that the response a survivor receives when he or she discloses sexual assault can have a critical impact on their recovery, and it sends a message to the community.
When we respond negatively to someone who discloses sexual assault, it can create added trauma for the survivor, and it fosters an environment in which perpetrators face no consequences for their crimes.
But when we respond by listening, by believing, survivors are far more likely to access resources, receive services that can help them through their trauma, and follow through with the investigation and the prosecution of cases.
That is why this April, across West Tennessee, we are partnering with communities to raise awareness and encouraging people to sign the pledge to start by believing.
Because no one should have to feel alone after sexual assault.
No one should have to be afraid to reach out for help.
We want people to know that they will be heard.
Their voices matter. What happened to them matters.
They will be believed.
And it starts here with us in our West Tennessee communities.
We will let survivors know that we believe them.
Collectively, our West Tennessee communities can be a safe haven for victims and survivors of sexual assault, a place where they know they'll be heard.
And believed.
To find out more about how you can help, go to raptn.org and find out what's going on in your community for Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
And be sure to contact RAP to find out how you can sign the pledge to start by believing. That's 731-668-0411.
Together, we can commit to making West Tennessee a safe place to live.
And it all starts by believing.
Mayor Gist, we're going to ask you and the council members to each sign this pledge card saying that you will start by believing when someone tells you they've been sexually assaulted.
Okay, thank you, girl. Thank you all. Thank you, council members. Next proclamation is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Share your coo staff, and we have some board members here, so anyone from Carl Perkins, come on up. Okay, thank you all for being here. It's been a great crowd. Child Abuse Center, thank you all. Whereas we need to recognize that child abuse and neglect is a serious and growing problem that changes lives past for nearly 4 million of our nation's children annually. Whereas this problem has reached epidemic proportions in all regions of our nation, respects no racial, religious, socioeconomic, or geographic boundaries, and can prevent children from following the road to a successful future. And whereas we need to take steps to educate the public on child abuse and its causes. And whereas the Exchange Club Carl Perkins Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse is participating in national child abuse prevention efforts through their awareness campaign with a "Plant Smiles, Grow Giggles, Harvest Love" theme. Now therefore, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, Jimmy Harris, Mayor of County of Madison, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and encourage all citizens to observe this time to better understand, recognize, and respond to this grievous problem as the center helps to strengthen families and prevent abuse. Now we further commend the Exchange Club Carl Perkins Center for Prevention of Child Abuse for its continued success in helping families break free from the cycle of abuse and urge full support of their successful efforts. As witness, we are, we're here in two Senator Hands, causing sales of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, Madison County, Tennessee, to be fixed this third day of April. So thank you all for what you do in our city and county.
Thank you. On behalf of our board, staff, volunteers, and clients that we serve, we want to kick off Child Abuse Prevention Month 2018. The statistics are staggering. One in four girls and one in six boys will be sexually abused before they reach the age of 18. One in five children will be sexually solicited while on the internet. 90% of the time, this is somebody that the child knows and trusts. Child abuse affects every facet of our society. There's a huge financial cost that comes along with this. It affects us all, whether you know it or not. As a result of child abuse, there's a tremendous cost for treatment, for drug and alcohol treatment, mental health treatment, increased crime. It affects every part of our community. And that's where we need to all come together and take a stand against child abuse. Child abuse can occur through neglect, physical abuse, sexual abuse, emotional abuse. And the victims are real. This doesn't just happen in a big city that you see on TV. It happens in every county all across West Tennessee. And we know because we work with those children on a daily basis. The victim, it's a little girl whose trust has been shattered by somebody she knows. It's a little boy whose nightmares are real. And it's the thousands of children that we work with every year that we see who have been hurt. And they carry the tragedy with them, the loss, the guilt, the shame. And so our goal this month is to create awareness that everybody has a role in protecting children. It starts with your own children and grandchildren. But we need to put better things in place to protect all children. We have programs that can educate you on how to better recognize signs and what to do when a child does disclose abuse. We want to turn hurt to healing, and that's what we work with on a daily basis, is to try to help children heal from what's happened to them. But we also want to plant seeds of hope. It doesn't stop with what's happened to them. Child abuse doesn't have to define who you are. And so we want to promote healing. We want to give children confidence, and we want them to go ahead and live up to the potential that they have. It takes a lot of work for that to happen. So through hope, we want to plant the seeds of love, and that's something we certainly strive to give the children who don't receive this at home. Adverse childhood experiences, the results are huge, and we want to combat that. And it takes all of us working together. Our board works tirelessly to give us the support we need so we can help the children have a better tomorrow. And that's what we want for our community, because the future of our community, of our state, of our country, depends on the next generation. And we have a world of hurting children. We want them to be healed. We want them to be able to prosper, and we want them to be able to be productive citizens. And so our goal for this month is to engage as many people as possible to help us plant those seeds. We may not ever see the result that you think we should, but we know because we see on a but we know because we see on a daily basis what this means for each child and each family that we come into contact with. So thank you so much for allowing us to be here and helping us as we plant seeds, grow giggles, and harvest love. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here this morning. Our final proclamation this morning is National, celebrating National Telecommunicators Week. Ananda Jirkin is here, and I'll remind her that somewhere in scripture it says, "The last shall be first." Okay, so proclamation, whereas every day, nine one one public safety telecommunications from the City of Jackson Central Dispatch, Police and Fire, Madison County Sheriff's Office, Madison County Fire Department, Jackson MedLink, and the Tennessee Highway Patrol answer requests for emergency aid from the public with professionalism and compassion. And whereas the efforts of these unseen first responders to answer calls for help, gather essential information, and assure that appropriate assistance is provided have saved innumerable lives. And whereas the work of these nine one one public safety telecommunications is invaluable and deserves public recognition and appreciation. And whereas in order to recognize the high quality of communication services provided by our nine one one public safety telecommunications, the United States Congress designated the third full week in April as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And whereas Jackson Madison County hereby honor and commend the nine one one public safety telecommunications for their professionalism, commitment, compassion, and steadfast purpose of their goals of protecting life and property. Now therefore, I Jericho's Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the week of April nine through fifteen two thousand eighteen as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And Ananda, congratulations to you. Thank you all for what you do. I've been over there and I don't want that job. So come up here and accept this and congratulations.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the city council and to the mayor. Without them, you know, they make our job a whole lot easier and so as well as the rest of the department heads of the City of Jackson because we couldn't do it without the training and the willpower that they push behind us, as well as the law enforcement agencies and also the Jackson Fire Department. We don't, we have a small crew here this morning because we actually have a conference going on at the hospital that several of them are at today, so I don't have, and then the rest of them are behind the nine one one phone because that has to be answered twenty-four seven. But this is where it begins. You can give proclamations out and they're well deserving proclamations. But for the city and the, the police department and the fire department, right here is where it begins. And it takes a very strong person to be able to handle a nine one one position because of what they hear on the other end of that phone. They're hearing that subject that could be in the middle of being raped. They're hearing that individual that's getting beaten in the background while they're taking the phone call because somebody else is calling. They're also hearing people running in and out of a house saying that it's completely engulfed in flames and their baby's still in the house. Holly Richardson is here with me. She's one of our senior, one of twenty-four in our department. But she's about one out of thirty-five, maybe forty-five within the city and the county that do this job twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. When it snows and it's ice, they slide into work. They may have spouses that bring them to work. If they can't get to work, we manage to get them there. But they do come in and they do answer those phones. Holly's been with us how many years? Eighteen years. I actually have been doing this for about thirty-three years, minus ten years that I was absent outside the city. But I actually had the pleasure of training Holly in her years, so she's done a marvelous job. She's learned quite a deal of it on their own because they have to answer that phone. There's only so much you can train. And then the rest they have to do on their own. So thank you very much. We appreciate this honor. And if you ever have to call nine one one, just remember that calm voice on the other side, listen because they're going to get you help. You may not think so, but they're going to get you someone out there. Thank you.
Okay. Ira Masev has some recognitions that we have indicated to people that come up and address the council. And our first one is Dr. Eric Jones, Superintendent of Jackson Madison County Schools, Overview of Education in Jackson Madison County. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Last time I was sitting in this seat, it was pretty hot. Applying to be superintendent. Thank you, City Council and Mayor Gis for a lot of me the opportunity to kind of give you a, a brief recap of the state of schools and where we are in the school system and where we plan to go moving forward. I'll be very conscious of your time. I'm going to cram about a forty-five minute presentation into roughly eight to ten minutes. So I'm a preacher's kid, so you better hold me to that. So start nodding your head and I'll move along. The next two slides just really give us a, a baseline of currently where our school system resides in terms of testing and ELC test. We have two main tests that measure that. That's English Language Arts and Math. As you can see, across ELA and Math, as you look at those percentile ranks, that establishes where we currently rank in regards to the rest of the state. So you can see that in roughly all areas, most of the state of Tennessee is outperforming our students currently. To give you a little perspective on that, if you look at this map over the last six years, as you look at academic growth throughout the state of Tennessee, and just so you know, Tennessee is acknowledged as the top three or four states in the country in terms of their academic growth. If you're familiar with your Tennessee geography, green is good and purple is not. And you can see where Madison County lies on that map. We are purple. So that kind of gives you a state of, of where we've been. But that's okay. We acknowledge that as a school system. And we are working vigorously to, to change that. And here are a few reasons why. We can name many. But there, there's been a lot of change in our school district over the last ten years. But these are things that really jump out in this first year as some issues that have been underlying causes that have in large part contributed to those numbers that you saw. I won't go through a lot of that, but just to give you an idea of really what our focus is this year, we really want to shift to a coaching mindset. If our people are not performing the way that we want them to, we can't fire everyone. That's not our goal. That's been the message before. Just get rid of them. We have to develop that mindset that we expect to see in our teachers and educators and principals. We have to coach that up. If they're not performing, it's reflection on us. The current reality of our school system, our children are coming to us with more and more significant social and emotional needs and educational deficits. We've been asked to do more with all children than ever before. The demographics in Jackson Madison County have significantly shifted. Ten years ago, I believe we were less than fifty percent of our students were free and reduced lunch. We're about fifty fifty African American, Caucasian. Now, we are roughly eighty percent of our students are coming to us in need financially. And the demographics of our school system are about seventy-five, twenty-five African American to Caucasian. And there are a lot of adjustments that have not been made along the way that we must embrace currently. So with that being said, there's five areas of focus that our school system will have as long as I'm superintendent. And we will not change this focus and we must get these five things right. I firmly believe if we do these five things well, we will reap the benefits in years to come. But the first line of defense is climate and culture. Our schools must be places where people feel good about what's happening. And we, they believe in the work that's going on. And that goes back to what we talked about earlier. Our people need to know that we have their backs and that we are there to support them completely. Trust in the process. We did not get this way in our school system overnight. And the things that we need to get in place are not going to happen overnight. So we must lay out a, a very firm plan. And we must trust the process as we move through that plan. The next piece of this is program alignment. Everything that we do in our school system must make sense. There's so many things that we've done in our schools, and this is nationwide issue, that just don't make sense and don't fit where we ultimately say we're trying to get to. We must make sure that from K to twelve, everything that we're doing is aligning to ensure that our students leave with two things, options and opportunities. So climate and culture, program alignment are two main areas of focus. Early foundations, we focus a lot on the big kids, but we don't have to focus as much on the big kids if we get it right early. So a very strategic approach to ensuring that K three years are the most important years in our school system. Studies show us if you are living in poverty and you are a minority and you're not reading on grade level by the time you get to third grade, that's what they build jails on. And if we know this, what are we going to do about that? What are we going to do to change the tide of that in our school system? So early foundations has to be a huge point of emphasis. So school climate and culture, program alignment, early foundations. Workforce development. Ensuring that, again, our students leave with two things, options and opportunities. If I'm a parent, that's all I can ask for the school system, that when my baby walks across that stage, that they have options and opportunities in life. So what are we going to do to ensure that we align the resources we have in this city? That we provide opportunities for our students once they leave us to go into the workforce. And workforce development consists of three areas. Are they ready to go into the military? Are they ready to go into workforce? Or are they ready to go into some form of post-secondary education? How do we strategically align the work that we're doing in our school system to ensure that that happens? So that's kind of our areas of focus. And all this is pointing towards career readiness. At the end of the day, this is what we want our students to be able to be ready for, is career readiness. And a fundamental piece of that is literacy. And you say, are you talking about reading and writing? I know they can read and write, absolutely. We're more talking about ability to interact with a text and pull information out of a text. That's where our students, the comprehension piece is really lacking. So we have to be very strategic in how we teach literacy across all areas. So literacy is the spine that holds all of this together. You know, if, if we can teach our students how to think and think critically, they can overcome a multitude of gaps. So we're focusing less on preparing them for a test, so to speak. It's going back to the basics, reading, writing, arithmetic, that we have to have a significant focus and build that foundation. But if that foundation is there, the rest is pointless. So a huge focus on literacy, some early indicators. As you see, green, green is positive. This is our benchmark test. And this kind of determines where we are throughout the school year. That gives us an indication of how well our students could possibly score on the end of course exams that, that are coming up here in May. Green is good. So if you see winter of seventeen compared to the winter of eighteen, early indicators, our focus and our instructional framework have started already reap benefit and pay huge dividends. And that's in math and ELA. So you see a lot of great work that's happening. Long road ahead of us, but our early indicators that we are definitely moving in a positive direction. So with that being said, everything must line up. And if you remember, our five areas of focus is what I talked about, our capital plan. I want you to remember those five areas of focus that we talked about because that capital plan was built around that. As you think about school climate and culture, as you think about program alignment, as you think about workforce development, early foundations, and a focus on literacy, these all guided decision-making in our ten-year capital plan. But at the bulk of this, TLM did a study roughly two years ago on all of our schools that are thirty years and older. We're not talking about any school younger than that. We're talking about just our schools that are thirty years old. You're talking about roughly fourteen to fifteen schools. And they identified about a hundred and forty-eight million dollars worth of needs that need to happen over the next ten years. And they went into these buildings with the assumption that we are planning on being in these buildings for the long haul. So as we looked at that plan, you start looking at buildings that, did it make more sense to let those buildings go or invest in trying to fix them? In some instances, in many instances, it made more sense to build anew than to invest in schools that were well past the time of being restored. And there are many reasons why those schools got to that point. I don't want to get into that now. All I want to focus on is where we're going moving forward. And these are the things that we thought about as we built out this long-range plan. But we wanted to make sure that if we are talking about a hundred and forty-eight million dollars, that we are really looking at every opportunity we can to best use those dollars. But the two main objectives were measuring cost of repairs versus replacement. And also, at the crux of all of this, is simply doing what's right for children. Not what's right for adults, not what's right for politicians, but doing what's right for children and what makes sense. If I'm going to be in this seat, that's what's going to dictate the decisions that we're going to make. So with that being said, the first building that came up was Lincoln. Lincoln had roughly seven to eight million dollars worth of needs. And that's just what was on the surface. As you start digging into it, it could have been a lot more. We had Whitehall that had been hit by the storm and it was already being restored. So it made a lot of sense to move Lincoln to Whitehall. We're going to add a wing onto Lincoln. And that will be done by January of two thousand nineteen. And it will now take on the Lincoln students. And Lincoln will no longer be in operation. Also, over the next few years, we had to look at Alexander. Alexander was another school that it made more sense to get out of Alexander than it did to invest ten to twelve million dollars into fixing it over the next ten to twelve years. And that led us to think about closing Alexander and building a K eight, or actually building a middle school on the backside of JCM. And it will, for all intents and purposes, be Mary something when we build that school. And it will be a, a middle school that will serve the center cluster. And that goes into closing Alexander. Those students will be dispersed amongst other elementary schools. There's only about three hundred students there, three hundred and fifty students. And we also will build a new K eight in the northwest cluster. We will be closing Pope. That K eight will serve roughly twelve hundred students. And it will, all of this was in plans to happen in two thousand twenty. That's very aggressive, but that's our goal. And that middle school behind JCM will have a partnership with Lang College. If you think back to what we talked- If you think back to what we talked about, workforce development and opportunities for our students, there will be a STEM concept at that middle school, and then you also have the K-eight. And also, there will be a rezoning in that summer. Just the center cluster will be rezoned. North Parkway will become a K-eight, and it will be zoned to the north side. And then you have Madison Academic. Madison costs roughly fourteen million dollars for us to fix, and we could build a building that has the same capacity on the campus of University of Memphis for significantly less price than to fix that up. And we also will have access to all of Lambeth's athletic facilities, their theater, and their auditorium as well. So, that move made a lot of sense as well. And then you have, so now you have long-term strategic partnerships with Lang College. What I did not mention, on the backside of the Jackson Central Mary Early College High, there will be a workforce development center that will focus on advanced manufacturing and health science. It will be a partnership with Jackson State and TCAT. And we also will finish out the rest of our priority projects to get the rest of our schools upright. And then the last thing will be in the south cluster, we will start K-eights at Southwest Bemis and Denmark, and they will all feed into South Side High School. As you can see, a trend moving toward more K-eights in our school system. If I'm a parent and I know where my child will be for nine years, that gives me the opportunity to get back involved in the school system. And then, of course, we will be looking at, in that District One area, the Atlanta area, having a zoning component to the Montessori school. If you remember, Parkview once had a zone. We will return to that model, and then looking at possibly putting some form of weight into Madison Academic in the District One area. And so, while I'm here with you, of course, this takes funding. And right now, we have a three-pronged approach as a school system. We are looking to get the K-eight in the northwest, and also the rest of the repairs that are with the schools that I mentioned in the TLM report funded through our commission. We're looking to establish a public-private partnership to build the middle school in East Jackson, and we need help financially with the building of Madison Academic on Lambeth's campus. And I'm here to solicit the support of the city council. And I've gone past my ten minutes, but thank you.
Typical preacher. Thank you, thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I just had one question, Eric. You said you'd make Denmark K through eight. Would South Elementary remain the same?
South Elementary, West Bemis, and Denmark all become K-eights.
Okay.
On the funding portion of it, you understand the city's inside the county. So, the city taxpayers are paying county taxes. How am I going to justify to my constituents to pay twice for these things? Because they're already paying once to the county taxpayers. Come back in, is the city also paid again?
I can answer it by saying this. When it comes to our community and it comes to our students, ultimately, we're in a position to where we need as much support as we can get. And yes, it may come back on them doubly, but I fear the alternative of not investing in education. And I completely understand that concern, but it is the best way I see, in this current situation, to get this project to the finish line.
So, you feel it's better for the taxpayers to pay twice, it's through the county to fund bill like they should to start off?
No, I don't feel it's better.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Jones, I'd like to comment and commend you also on your leadership that you bring to our city and welcome back to our city. But I'd like to, you know, whatever dollar figure it is for us to take a look at it, ask our former council members to take a look at it, and do what we can to support our kids. Because the ultimate goal is to make our school system a better place. And as you work around and go and deal with our schools and deal with our youth, they are our future, and we're going to have to support them. So, Mayor, hopefully we can get someone to take a look at it and see if we find out you're able to support the school. I think it's very important that we do ever see that I know, you know, we do pay twice, but the ultimate goal is making sure our school system is better and our youth is being, getting the best education they can. So, thank you for all you're doing.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Jones, for your presentation this morning. When you come back with perspectives for what you're wanting to do with respect to the Montessori school and the Madison Academics, then we will take a second look at it. Is that right, Mayor Gist? We'll take a second look at it and come back with the funding part of it and decide whether or not we can do it. All you had this morning was the presentation. We understand that fully, and we understand that our kids in Jackson Madison County need to be educated very well. We're behind, as your graphic show. But we're not here this morning to say we're going to support it or not. We're here to listen to your presentation, and it was very well, very well presented. But when he comes back with the cost factors, then we'll take notice of that. Is that right, Mayor?
Really up to council. We can handle this several different ways. We can put a committee to work with Dr. Jones. We can have him come back before the entire council and prepare for us a written request as to what specifically they would like for the city to do. And that may be, that may be the best effort there, is just to come back before the council and specifically tell the council what you're looking for and what you'd like for us to do. Our interest obviously is, number one, education of our kids. Secondly, our interest is continuing to build our center city. The facility on Lambeth Campus, U of M Lambeth Campus, is, I think, critical to the future growth of our center city in the Atlanta area. From Hollywood to Highland to Airways, we have about eight thousand people that live just within that small confines. And I think our effort is to totally rebuild that district because it's one of the older districts in our city. And I see that that construction as being critical to long-term. That being done, obviously, we're more, we also have an interest in certain zoning requests that we would like to see happen along with that to where, if parents have their children, they qualify for Montessori or qualify for Madison Academic, if they live in that district, then we would like to see some concessions, I think, on some zoning in order to continue to build that particular district. People come in, buy homes, renovate the homes, or build new homes in that particular district. So, I think we have a lot to discuss. Council, you all want to consider a committee? I can name a five-member committee to work with Dr. Jones for the next month and then come back and...
I'd like to make a motion to put a committee together to work with Dr. Jones.
Okay. Five-member committee, okay with everybody?
I guess my only comment there would be that if the city's thinking about getting back in the education system, do we need to consider again going back to have city schools and county schools?
I think that's something that five-member committee can bring back to the full council, council-wise. I think, you know, we're, we have, we have the vision of the school system, I think we need to...
Mayor, yes. Why aren't we forming a committee now?
To meet with Dr. Jones to see specifically what he would ask the city to do, the story is the capital needs of the school system. Then that committee can bring their recommendation back to council. Right now, we don't have the limits of funding. We don't know how much of a house, we don't know specifically what we're being asked to do. And I think the five-member committee could meet with Dr. Jones, outline, him outlining exactly what he'd like the city and what ways the city can participate in carrying out the vision of the Jackson Madison Academy system. Bring the recommendation back to council. I think there's a lot of Ts and a lot of Is to dot, a lot of Ts to cross. So, I think, is everyone, you all okay with the five-member committee to begin this process? Or, do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second to establish a five-member committee to work with Dr. Jones in looking at future needs of the school system and how the city can perhaps maybe participate in that program. So, I'll be naming the committee and ask you all to consider, if I call you, to consider serving on that committee for several weeks, okay? Okay, thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on it?
Oh, we need to vote, I'm sorry. Yeah, we got it, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second, okay. All councilmen in favor, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven members in favor, one voting no.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Dr. Jones. Okay, our second recognition is Jackson Madison County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Lori Nunnery, I think, is here to make that presentation.
And for the record, I'd like to give Marcus the rest of the day off. He's had a busy morning, so, no. Good morning, Councilman Mayor. My name's Lori Nunnery, the Jackson Madison County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. Unlike Superintendent Jones, I'm going to take four hours of your time, so sit back and get comfortable.
Let me get some coffee.
And I'm a creature's kid as well, so I understand.
You know we call for research.
First of all, we are the destination marketing organization for Jackson and Madison County, otherwise known as Visit Jackson Tennessee. We seek to positively impact the local economy by increasing travel-related spending in the county. We want to provide quality services to the visitor and the local hospitality industry. And we want to assist in the development, preservation, and expansion of the county, region, and state tourism product. And that is our mission for the Tourism Office. We are governed by a board of five that is appointed by the city and the county. On that board are Jane Alderson, Dave Bratcher, Jimmy Exum, Tom Hensley, and Esther Mylum. I'd like to thank Commissioner, Councilman Rahm for his service on our committee. He serves as the liaison to the city. One of the things in looking at tourism that I think it's important to know is that we've had tremendous growth, especially over the last five years, peaking in twenty sixteen, I'm sorry, twenty fifteen, with about twelve and a half percent growth of the hotel motel tax. Many people don't realize that the hotels in this community alone generate over thirty-six million dollars in sales. And so, when I come to you today, unlike a lot of people that have been before you, we are your revenue generator. Tourism brings money to this economy, and that's our purpose. So, I'm not asking for money today. We are here to help you bring more money into your economy, and that's what we will continue to do as far as tourism is. The one thing that I think is important to realize is that we are handicapped by our funding. And this is not a complaint, it's just a statement of facts. When you look at our comparable cities, when you look at Florence, Alabama, when you look at Tupelo, when you look at Kingsport, Tennessee, when you look at Clarksville, Tennessee, they average a staff between seven and eleven people and over one million dollars each. Seven to eleven staff and one million dollars in revenue that they operate their offices office. Right now, we're at two people in our office and a little over three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So, the playing field is not level for us, but don't worry, we're working very hard. And that's what we do. And we are working to grow our business and then grow the income coming into our city and county. Tourism no longer is a trade sales, a trade show visiting. That's not how our business is done. When I started this job nine years ago, a tremendous amount of our assets were put in buying ads in Red Book Magazine or going to trade shows or hosting fam familiarization tours. And we still do a little bit of that, but with the shift of the internet and social media, our day-to-day business has changed drastically over those last nine years. For Facebook, we worked consistently hard in that, and in twenty seventeen, our organic reach on our Facebook posts increased by a hundred and ninety-five percent. Our videos viewed on Facebook increased by a hundred and eighty-seven percent. When we look at our Twitter campaigns, we see that we reached over a hundred and thirty-one thousand impressions. That's a growth of nearly seventeen percent. When you look at the visitor guides that we send out, and this is the traditional model, you'd be amazed to learn about the states that are asking for information on Jackson, Tennessee. And it's not what people would typically think. Out of the top ten states, starting with number one, we have the most requests coming from Ohio, Tennessee, followed by Florida, Illinois, Pennsylvania, Michigan, Indiana, Kentucky, Wisconsin, and New York. As far as those that are out of our country that are asking for information on Jackson, the leading area is Canada. We have fulfilled in twenty seventeen, with the great help of Paige Keith, keeping on top of this in our office, over ten thousand group sales requests. Those requests request our goodie bags, our visitors' guides. We provide welcome packets for groups coming in. That's over ten thousand that were filled in twenty seventeen. Newsletters, which is an important part of our campaign, we sent out over three hundred thousand newsletters in twenty seventeen. That focused on our events, our music, and this went also to special groups that were coming in and to attendees to the Sportsplex. Our Jackson T and Weekend campaign, which is a video series where Paige is the hostess, visiting different destinations in Jackson and West Tennessee, averages a reach of over fifty thousand people each campaign. We have ten campaigns a year, and we've been doing this, we're starting our third year. So, I'll let someone else do the math on that, but it's getting out there, and we're very proud of that campaign. Events we support, the Andrew Jackson Marathon, the Jackson Generals, the AMP at the West Tennessee Farmers Market, the Rockabilly Grand Prix, the Firefighters Freedom Festival, the International Students Dinner, and the Jackson International Food and Arts Festival, the Jackson, I'm sorry, the Veterans Parade, and Christmas in the City, and the Sportsplex. We also award over forty thousand dollars in grants to local nonprofits that are doing events to help draw people to our city. So, you see, we're kind of busy, and we're going to remain busy, and we're going to continue to grow our business. One of the things that I'd like to show you, and the real purpose of today's presentation, if you look on the screen, you'll see a new app that was developed for us in partnership with Visit Widget. And the purpose of this is not only to provide us an Android and an iOS app that you can download on your phones, but also this is insertable into our website as a widget so someone that uses the desktop models like I do can go on. You'll have to follow me. With the programming, you can click in there, and it has our social media feed. Any social media that we post is actually fed into this, and it populates this. So, people that are looking at Jackson can get an idea of what's going on. It also integrates into our events calendar, so this can give you a wide outlook of things that are coming up. One of the greatest components of this are the places part. And so, you have this ability on the right-hand side. If you want to look at all the hotels, it'll populate those on the map. You can drill down into it and look. It also has the information on the hotels on this side. So, as you scroll down through, you click on a hotel, it pulls up the information, it gives you a direct link to their phone and to their website. It gives you an idea of the amenities they offer, whether it's breakfast, whether they have Wi-Fi, a workout area. And then along that, so if you're looking at the hotels, you can also look at locally-owned restaurants. You can look at attractions, things that are tied to arts and culture, nightlife, levations, locally-owned retail, sports and outdoors, history, music, family-friendly. If you're looking to have your wedding in West Tennessee, it's a little hard to see on here, you can scroll down and look at all of the venues, and it'll populate those on the map, and then it'll pull up. So, it's a one-stop resource that is going to be easy for people to use. The next component is our itineraries. This is our Jackson T and Weekend campaign. You pull it up, it gives you a list of all the assets on that itinerary, it maps it out for you. And it's a little harder to see on the smaller screen. And it breaks it down into several things. And then you can create your own plan. And the great thing about your own plan is it maps it all out. You hit it to start the plan, and it gives you driving directions to get from one place to another. You can reorder the items into whatever order you want them in. But it's a one-stop-shop resource for people that are coming. So, this is a desktop model that's available on our website at Jackson T and... So this is a desktop model that's available on our website at Jackson T and Weekend. The Chamber is also committed to have it on their website, and I would applaud the city and the county both have agreed to put this widget on their websites as well, so somebody visiting the city or the county's websites will be able to see this and use this device. This is what we're doing with the more money that's coming into tourism that we have through the hotel motel tax, because that is solely how we are funded. So this is a new project that we were able to get involved with and develop these apps. We are the first CVB in the state of the Tennessee to have this, and we're just very thrilled. You'll be seeing a publicity push be going out probably in the next two to three weeks on this app. So there are a lot of good things happening in tourism, the numbers alone are just, very pleased with them. We've had such tremendous growth, it's going to be, it's going to be hard to keep up those numbers. I look for a three to four percent growth in 2018 and continuing that in 2019. We're pleased with the recent opening in December of the Hilton Garden Inn on Van Drive. I'd encourage you to go out there and take a look at that property. It is a great facility. I wish it had more meeting room space, because we are missing out on a tremendous amount of opportunities to bring more guests into our community, because we don't have the meeting room space. And it continues to be an issue for our community. And the challenge is, since we don't have that, we're not on people's radars anymore. We can accommodate a lot of small groups, but once you get over that hundred and fifty mark, it's hard for us to work them into our community. And they want to come here. They don't want to pay Nashville rates, they don't want to pay Memphis rates, they want to come to a place that's affordable and where they're the star of the show when they come to the community. And I would say this about our community, I'm always constantly amazed at how well the different entities work together to pull off events. We're working on a Travel Writers Tour that's coming in next week, and just the generosity of the different clients that are willing to entertain our guests as they come in, it's just, it's a great thing. It makes our job easier, and it makes me proud of this community and what it does. I would be happy to entertain any questions. I guess what I'm here to say is, we're here to do business, we're here to generate revenue, but we need your help. And I would ask you to please consider looking at our organization, our doors are always open to answer any questions. We want to grow this business, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for being here, Lori, thank you for what you do. Councilman Don.
A quick question. We had talked once before about promoting Lane College Homecoming Week. Have we started promoting that and working with Lane to account?
Yeah, yeah, they're absolutely included, they're always on our events calendar, their venue is listed on there, and colleges and universities, and then it's also included in our social media campaign. So those different events that I listed, all those events that we are involved with, we offer those same services to any event that would be attractive to a tourist coming into our community. Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions, Lori? Why don't you say?
I just have a comment, Mayor. Ms. Nunnery, thank you on behalf of the council for you and the Bureau's efforts in making Jackson a destination place. Certainly, your staff and resources are limited compared to others. You all do a phenomenal job, and thank you.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that.
Anyone else? Lori, thank you very much for your time. There's no objection from council. We have, we have the Director of the Arts Council and the Board Chair here who got up early this morning to make a presentation to council. They've been here, very patient, so if there's no objection from council, let's go ahead and hear from the Arts Council, if you would. Melinda, come on out. And Monty.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the time, thanks for allowing Mr. Buchanan to speak on behalf of the Arts Council. On behalf of the Board of Directors, I want to thank you for the opportunity. We have several arts supporters with us today, Arts Council Board members as well as Arts Coalition members, and I'd like for them, if they would, to just stand at this time.
Am I standing? Thank you for being here, thank you.
Thank you very much. We do thank you for this opportunity to express our gratitude for your support of funding the arts and investing our mission of connecting and strengthening the arts. It's grant season at the Arts Council, and Melinda Reed, our Executive Director, is going to share a brief highlight on how your support has impacted the arts by way of grants in our communities.
Thank you. As we are currently preparing our art groups for upcoming Jack Grant and ABC Grant by way of conducting workshops, we wanted to reflect on the impact of the funded projects made possible by your ongoing support. These grant programs are very competitive, they are sourced with a citizens panel that is thoroughly trained to facilitate the panel review. The first grant is the ABC Grant. In 2017, we're proud to announce that ten recipients totaling over eleven thousand dollars received grant funding from the ABC Grant. The Jack Grant, which you guys help support, in 2017, seven recipients totaling over twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to be exact, received grant funding. You may be familiar with several of them. We're proud to announce those groups, those seven groups are Ballet Arts, CMAC, Jackson Choral Society, Jackson Symphony, Jackson Downtown Development Corporation, Jackson Theater Guild, and Star Center. Lastly, we have some exciting news to share with you all. The Arts Council was one of twenty statewide partners that was selected by the Tennessee Arts Commission out of Nashville to partner up with the Arts Commission and Americans for the Arts to participate in a huge economic impact study. It's the fifth national study of its kind over the past twenty years that really measures the huge impact of the arts and cultural groups on local jobs, income paid to local residents, and revenue generated to local and state governments. We're happy to announce that here locally, the arts support one hundred and ninety full-time equivalent jobs, supports four point seven million dollars in economic activity, and three point one million dollars in household income. The bottom line is that the arts truly mean business in Jackson, so we are so grateful for all of your support and believing in our mission and for your financial investments in the arts, so thank you very much.
Any, any questions of Melinda, Monty, while they're here, as far as Arts Council? We appreciate you all and what you all do on a daily basis, especially all the board members that are here and also from the Coalition that are here today. We continue to appreciate you all, what you do for our city.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, thank you. Item eight, first reading, we have none. Out of nine second readings, we have one consideration. Ordinance to close abandoned street stub running northwest from Moses Drive to Stanfield Lane. This is the second reading. Is there a motion? We have a motion?
Second.
There's a second. Discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
County of New Business, first item, a new business authorization, purchase property owned by the state of John T. Murphy located at five seventeen dash five twenty Airways Boulevard for the purpose of relocating the Parks Maintenance Operations Department. We have a purchase agreement, and your package was given to you this morning, I think, for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to purchase the former Murphy Tractor Company properties, about four acres of that. You all have, I think, a cover letter, maybe not the entire appraisal because of killing so many trees. We're asking, you have the purchase agreement and the appraisal, it was two hundred and fifty-five thousand, so it's roughly, what, thirty, thirty thousand or less than the appraisal value.
Mr. Chairman, we read your notation with respect to the commerce property, it just didn't work out, is that right?
Yeah, the property initially that council authorized us to try to negotiate for, the property was sold before we could get back to the owner after that authorization, so it went into a nonprofit. So we had to get back on the road to continue to look for a proper location to locate our Parks Maintenance Division. Their facility is deplorable, is owned by TBA, they've been there, if I know, thirty years, twenty-five years, and we will be asking the Tennessee Valley Authority to let us go ahead and demolish that building, which is adjacent to our groundskeeping department.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Second.
A motion, second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two is acceptance of Charter Review Committee changes to the existing charter, and Melissa, I'll let you handle that along with committee members who served on that committee.
What's it Arnold says, I'll be back. We met a month ago and laid out the five recommendations that the Review Committee had made. Let me talk just a little bit about process, and then we can talk about substance. Every so often, the mayor has asked and appointed Charter Review Committee to look at the charter, make suggestions to try to improve it. We did that about six years ago, and we did that recently, we met three times, we made recommendations. These are just recommendations, the council can do three things with them, or at least three. One, accept them, two, reject them, or three, amend them. And the reason I say that is because when we came back, there were some council persons who wanted to look at them, talk about them, and there had been some suggestions of how we could make these changes better. I want to talk about that in just a minute. Each of you should have the list of what the proposals are in the sections of the current charter. Mine got somehow printed in micro, so. But let me direct you to the ones that I think are non-controversial. One was a posting of fidelity bond on behalf of the people for the city who actually handled the money, write checks, and the idea was that should be paid for by the city itself and not the individuals. The other was a proposal to allow the CFO of the city recorder to start collecting property tax revenues as soon as they know what they're going to be. Because of the data processing, electronics, we now know what taxes are going to be sometimes in July, and some people like to go ahead and get it off their mind and pay it so they don't have to worry about being late. Those two didn't have any, any questions or controversy, so we have no other comment. There was three areas, three, three things that were, had some discussions, and I want to go through those individually. In Section Three about elections, there were two suggestions that the Charter Review Committee made. One was establishing a minimum age for candidates. The suggestion they made was twenty-five for council persons and thirty for mayor. Before that, we had none. And there's been some discussion in the, in and out of this meeting, and I've had some people outside telling me why am I, you know, so, so hard on young people. I said, no, I'm not, I'm not, but these are just suggestions. Somebody asked me where the number twenty-five came from, and I said, that's the age of a U.S. Representative, thirty's the age of a U.S. Senator, just to kind of put it in context. So the first suggestion would be that we have those minimum ages. Now, I'm going to go through the other eligibility, and then it would be appropriate if the council wanted to make changes in those. Mr. Wallace has proposed one, to do that in the form of a motion to amend the recommendation, because it was presented as a, like a motion for y'all's consideration. The second one was about length of time to reside. We had a, the mayor should be a resident of the city for no less than a year to be eligible. For council persons, it was to be, to live in the district ninety days. Someone asked me, is that enough time to even get qualified? And I checked with the Election Commission. To run in the May second, two thousand nineteen race, you got to register by February twenty-first, which is seventy days. So ninety days would be twenty, twenty days before the petition. Mr. Wallace suggested, I think, a hundred and twenty days, and I'm, I'm not presenting it in the form of a motion, but it's an input that we received. The committee considered it and decided to keep it in, to make the recommendation to stay at ninety. So those are the two proposed changes to Section Three of the charter. And Mayor, what I think I'd like to do is take these section by section, so if you write them up and see if they want to make any, any formal motions to amend the committee's recommendation.
Is there, is there? Bill?
Mayor, yeah. After looking at this and studying it, the first one that I have as far as amending would be, we've got men and women in different countries protecting this country that are eighteen years old. I saw no reason why, if they can do this, why they couldn't be elected to the City Council. And the second one would be residential in the area at least, the council district at least one year. Would be my proposal for an amendment.
Okay.
And I suggest we take them one at a time and allow the process of a motion, a second, and an up or down.
Okay.
Are we discussing now, we accepting amendments?
Councilman Cisco just, just submitted an amendment, if I'm not mistaken.
Made a motion to amend, which would need a second and then a vote.
Would you, you mind giving that, that amendment one more time, Councilman?
Can we do it one at a time, one amendment at a time?
Yes, I think that'd be a better way to track what the will of the council is.
So we're talking about the age of council members?
Right.
And the mayor, so, Councilman, would you give your amendment one more time?
What age, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I am proposing amendment that anyone in the districts want to run for City Council, they be at least eighteen years old. They're protecting our country, and I feel like they have, ought to have the opportunity to affect the citizens here.
Okay, and that's for council members?
Right.
Everybody understand the amendment? Any discussion? We have, I consider that a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And that motion passes with five members voting in favor and three against.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
First, go ahead, Councilman Buchanan.
With respect to, in the committee met on it, I see in the minutes, with respect to filling vacancies on the council, I would like to amend that to say that the two-thirds majority, that is still in there, right? If we have eight members present, or seven, whatever council members are present, two-thirds majority who are present and voting to fill a vacancy on the council. I noticed in your minutes that you only had five members who were present for the vote, and it was a two-three vote.
Let me just make a suggestion, Mr. Cisco.
Hold on just a second. There was, that's what I'm talking about, two-thirds majority of the members present and voting. So my suggestion would be two-thirds majority of the members, council members, present and voting.
To elect a council member to fill a vacancy.
We have two thought processes. Mr. Cisco had proposed two different amendments to Section Three, and the other one was the minimum residency, and if we could, I, I hear you, you and I have talked about that several times. If we could go process them section by section, I think it would be easier for me to keep up with it and write, that's kind of how my notes are.
What are, what's remaining in our first?
I heard Mr. Cisco make a motion that a person running for City Council must live in that district a minimum of one year prior to the election. The recommendation, or the recommendation from the Charter Review was ninety days.
Ninety days.
So that'd be appropriate in the form of a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, well, do we have the motion? Did you make a motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay, okay, for one year, okay. We have a second. Discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And that motion passes with six members voting yes and two no.
Okay.
All right, now, Mr. Buchanan's motion was regarding the process of filling the vacancy. The way it's written...
Before we jump to his, or the mayor, thirty years, is that all good, we're good with that?
Yeah, that was not included in the motion, so I assume everybody's okay with having an old mayor.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. The third one was the process to fill a vacancy. The, what we've had and what we used last time was a process of seventy-five percent of people who, who have the ability to vote, whether they're present or not. What Mr. Buchanan wants, or proposes, as I understand your motion, is that the vote would be two-thirds of the members that appear.
Two-thirds of the members.
Present on the day the vacancy is filled.
Excuse me, is that, yeah, it's not a major, I mean, it's nine council members, that, except for...
You fill in the vacancy, if you have a quorum here, you want to simply vote on two-thirds, vote based on two-thirds of the members present and voting.
Okay.
Just like they do in the Congress, just like they do in the State House and the Senate. Two-thirds of the members present and voting.
Okay, all, all council members understand that motion to amend the two-thirds... Okay, all, all council members understand that motion to amend the two-thirds of the members that are present to fill that vacancy. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay.
Are those the only, the rest, now, having made those amendments to the committee's suggestions, would be appropriate, I think, at this point to adopt the entire basket of suggestions.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
The committee's report has amended.
Has amended, okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
I'll prepare that resolution.
Okay, the next, do we, okay, so we, we just automatically, we don't need a motion or approval to forward those to General Assembly, right?
We do.
We do need that.
That's, that's the next step.
Are we doing item three? Item three, Mayor?
Yeah.
Item three was yours.
No, item three on here.
Oh.
I think that's what it is.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
We just sent it to Nashville.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it'd be item three to go ahead and forward it to the General Assembly for their disposition before they adjourn, hopefully.
I'll so move.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay.
Do I get an extra payday for all this?
I've got three up here, I should have. I thank, thanks for the rest, and thank to the committee who, who worked on these charter changes. It's certainly prudent that we keep our charter updated and change to the changing times. Item four is acceptance of the Recreation Parks Master Plan, and Tony will make that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Y'all have heard a lot this morning, and I think I put a package of the master plan in every one of you's box. What I want to do is basically, first off, say that this process would not have been done without the help of Stan Pallett and the Planning Department and Howser Levine, which was the consulting firm that did the One Jackson. They also did this plan. And there are, under acknowledgement, there are many citizens and my board and people that were participated in this process. It started out about a year, a little bit over a year ago, and I want to apologize upfront to a couple of the members of our community. As all good people do, we reviewed it, the staff reviewed it, and we missed a couple of, just small errors, but I want to acknowledge the fact that under the Recreation Board, they have Robert Starr as robbery. So, please, and I would let them personally know that we are sorry. And then, under Barbara and John Borner, should be B-O-R-N-E-R, and they have Bonner. So, those corrections, I will make note to those individuals. If you have questions, this, this is a good, as, as the staff and I looked at it, and we concluded with, with our board accepting it, there are some good recommendations, and they looked at different areas, and the process went as such where we bought in stakeholders from the various community groups. For example, we bought in stakeholders from the soccer group. You know, we bought stakeholders from tennis, baseball stakeholders, Gillian League, as well as our recreational program. We bought stakeholders in that deal with some, some other areas, BEMAs, community, historical society, if you can look on the chronology. So we had a pretty good cross-section. Also, a survey was sent out to citizens that listed some things. We bought in AARP, you know, the Borner's represented the AARP, you know, tire association, which I'm a member of, but AARP, and, see I'm getting old, so. They made some recommendations. What the plan basically did was look at each area that we are responsible for and made some strong recommendations and some pretty good statistics, and one of the things that I want to emphasize is that I was concerned with where we ranked with other particular peer groups, communities, and what they found out is that we're in pretty good shape in terms of our peer groups. What it had found that in terms of our park facilities, communities would measure to determine the number of parks that we have per ten thousand residents. Jackson has three-point-seven parks per ten thousand residents, which is lower than the national median, which is about four-point-two. However, Jackson has more parks per ten thousand than the majority of peer communities, with the exception of Bartlett, which is above the national median of five-point-one per ten thousand represented. When comparing average of total park land per one thousand residents, Jackson has twelve-point-eight acres, which is above the national median average, and nine-point-one, but behind peer communities of Johnson City and Bartlett. Of course, those are some peer communities we measured, but in terms of outdoor athletic facilities, we measured per ten thousand residents, provided analysis of recreational amenities, using the NRPA, which is National Recreation Parks Association Standards as a baseline, Jackson outperformed all peer communities and exceeded NRPA standards for baseball, softball, soccer, and tennis. For basketball, Jackson outperformed per, per, per communities, but did not meet NRPA standards. Jackson did not meet recommended standards for volleyball, which no one really meets, but was consistent in peer communities, while Cleveland and Bartlett have no volleyball facilities.
Excuse me, Tony?
Yes?
You are in the process of looking for land or developing land.
Yeah, that's, that's...
South Jackson for soccer, so I've heard some folks talk about they made soccer fields out there, they're having to come all the way north to play soccer.
Well, let me, let me address that.
I don't want to run away from north now.
No, but let me address that, we did put soccer complexes, we did put two fields out there, and actually, we tried to run some soccer programs out there, and the participation just didn't come. There are people that don't like that drive, but we tried it, and it's not something that we'll totally rule out again, but we have, we have tried that.
Maybe we made some more out in the north.
Well, what I wanted to say is, and then I'll address the specifics and some of the concerns that the, the, the plan outlines, is that from a perspective of operating budget, the national average for municipalities with a population between fifty and ninety thousand is five-point-five million. The Recreation Parks Department and the operate, we fall below that by five-hundred thousand. So if you want to give me some more money, I mean, that'd be great. But it is a good plan, and the reason that we, we had this plan done is that in order to receive any grant money from the federal government or the state, you must have an updated master plan. And the master plan that we had was old, and we've kind of been getting by because they were a little lenient with us, but they've really cracked down now, and so this plan will guide us for, for the next years. And as you look at it, it's got some very good demographic areas, and one of the major emphasis that it pointed out that we must address, we've got an aging population. Our demographics is shifting, and that population age group of fifty to about seventy-four years old is, is definitely on the increase, and they make a strong recommendation for us to look at the possibility of a centralized senior citizen complex. That's, that's critical. And also, as you look through the plan, it talks about the various, it did an inventory of our resources, and it looked at our community parks and our neighborhood parks, and what's going to stand out very, very vivid to you is the Northwest Quadrant, which is part of the area we've annexed, which is north of the interstate and west of the bypass. When you look at the map, there's a big void that's going to jump at you in terms of, of parkland, particularly neighborhood parks, is what, what was concerned there. And so, as we talk about it, it makes recommendations for us to continue to look at some of our facilities, TR White, Westwood Community Center, all those would need to be at some point in the future upgraded. It made some recommendations for Shirley Mercer walking trails, some other amenities there, and it's making recommendations for just about all of our facilities and parks. It emphasizes a strong partnership, developing a better partnership with the school system for, for use of their facilities, which we do use now for our church league basketball, but it's talking about an ongoing relationship year-round for the use of their facilities. It's, it's a very good plan. It covers all the areas that we wanted them to cover, and so hopefully, you will accept this, and if you have any questions about any components that you may have read or any, any components of...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Mr. Black, I don't have any question, I have a comment.
Mm-hmm.
We've been needing a senior center for a very long time.
Yeah.
It's prevalent that we start looking that direction. You mentioned about the age, but we don't have a, we had a senior citizen, a center, I guess when I was in my thirties. I'm not going to tell you how old I am now, but we've been needing a center for a long time.
You need a senior center, huh?
Yeah, we should do. And what are, what are the plans?
Well, I don't have a plan. I, I think that we've worked with a group, and we looked at some facilities, and they've looked at some facilities. I think it's incumbent upon, when we talk about a center, you've got to ask yourself the question, are you wanting to look at existing buildings and re-modify them, or are you willing to make a commitment to totally fund a senior center with all the amenities that a city of this nature should have?
Well, in this city, it's definitely a need.
Yeah, and if you, if you, one city that you could look at as a model that we've looked at is North Little Rock, Arkansas. It has a senior center facility that is up state-of-art on the scale of the lift, but not as expensive as the lift, but you're talking, you know, quite an investment. Let me just give you a figure. Jackson population is aging. The boomer cohorts aged fifty-five to seventy-four is expected to see a rapid increase by 2021, while the senior cohorts aged seventy-five plus will all see, also see continued growth. In the same time, Generation Z, ages zero to nineteen, currently the largest cohort in Jackson, at twenty-point-nine-three percent, will see the largest decrease within the next year. The millennial cohorts aged twenty to thirty-four and Gen X, aged thirty-five to fifty-four, will generally remain steady with only modest decreases in percentage of the population. So, the aging trend would place a greater emphasis on services aimed at older, older residents. Based on the 2016 report from the Physical Activity Council, an organization that tracks fitness and trends, the growth in the boomer and the senior cohorts will likely mean an increased demand for outdoor sports and fitness activities. So that's our, that's our growing market, is the seniors, and we definitely need a senior center, it's something we need to seriously look at.
This is, this is something that we need now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you considering senior centers?
I make a suggestion that some of these schools that we got might be closing up.
Mm-hmm.
That we look at some of our existing building with our school system.
That's a, that's a very, very good idea.
Working with some of the school system and use it, we don't need that much space. Be a good idea.
Yeah. Now with, I can tell you, most senior centers, they, they require some good amenities. They, they're very, very particular, and we could, we could look at that.
Motion to accept the Recreation Parks Master Plan.
We have a motion to accept. Is there a second? Have a second discussion. Council, please vote. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item five, Ms. White, you still with us? All right, all right.
Considerate contract for guardrails.
Put one around the council chamber, right?
Okay. I'm not here to ask for money, I'm spending it. So the first one is for the guardrails, and the low bidder was Lou Incorporated. They were the lowest and best bid, ninety-five thousand, seven-hundred-ninety-two dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The next one is Leather Gear. We received four bids, and we recommend Mid-South Solutions. They were the best bid received.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Okay, motion, second?
Second.
Got a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
We had towing services, that was, was time to send out bids for that one. We received two. One was from Clement Wrecker Service and the other from Mann's Wrecker Service, and the lowest and best bid was from Mann's Wrecker Service.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion, second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Ms. White. Item eight, approval of Edward Byrne Jag Grant, total amount to be awarded is fifty-three thousand, thirty-one dollars, be split with the county, no match required.
Move their approval.
This is something we have a motion for approval and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item nine, approval of stop grant to allow city to continue with domestic violence investigator. Grant requires investigator be post-certified. The total is eighty thousand with a twenty-five percent match in the city. Grant will cover sixty thousand, the city will cover twenty thousand. Contracts for five-year period with a maximum award amount of three hundred thousand.
So moved.
Motion and second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item ten, the board appointments, Parks and Recreation Board, Pat Minkler, doctor reappointment.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
On the Airport Authority, reappointment of J.R. Ross.
So moved.
Motion, second discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
By our Mental Codes and Appeals Board, Martha White, reappointment.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Second discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
And for the Transit Authority, Dwayne Cherry, reappointment.
So moved.
Motion, second, anybody?
Second.
Second discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Okay, and under Jackson Massacre County Historical and Sony Commission, we have Herb Slack and Roland Fisher.
So moved.
Reappoint. We have a motion, a second discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Item eleven, the budget amendments, Ms. Dale.
Have one budget amendment, and this is for the purchase of the property that you just approved in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars for parks maintenance. This will require draw and fund balance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Last time, invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
There'll be no further business, meeting is adjourned.